Entrees.
Mm-hmm.
Crayberries and cheese.
There you go.
Cranberries and cheese. And I think you're going to want to start doing some snack packs when you can get it together. And, um... So I'll be really separate as much to the...
Sure it is. Same thing with trail mix.
And much pressure.
Same thing with trail mix.
The cashews that came in so you pay aside to stay. But you're like, suddenly you're just almost powdering it up like, I think, because they're dipping in the butter.
Probably. At least the oil.
You might smell things up to the top of your mouth then?
That must be what's got my eyes watering in the morning.
Smells so good. I love the smell of that scenario.
I love the smell of day bomb in the morning. Well, victory. Benjamin, need to go see a back doctor. I've got a good report.
And then they end up, they'll pop back in eventually.
Who?
Celestine Nico.
Oh, I've got nothing to do.
He was born in Nigeria, but wasn't raised in Nigeria.
I know. His wife was very much too.
And that's why.
She's a pharmacist or was the pharmacist at Public.
Well, that makes sense. You're already done from functions getting more money than you ever.
I do all right.
I get to be better than others.
I haven't seen it in a while, but I'm glad to know you still want to hear it.
I think the last time I clapped eyes on them was probably... Just keep passing.
I shouldn't have let doctors come in there for three, four years and then just get out.
There's a lot of that, yeah.
I'm just glad you still hear it.
Well, that was true of infinity. I don't know if it's as true of Southwood.
I'm sure it is. It's like...
Take what? Too low back.
Do you see an agenda here?
Should I have to go back?
Are there agendas?
I have another.
Hey, Doctor. Do you have an agenda? An agenda next?
You can have mine.
Oh, thank you so much.
She forgot to hit the twenty-five.
You should say twenty-two-five.
I'll get a reading. Get two of the back interests. Okay. Oh, that's Han Dynasty China. Way better.
Beautiful little Mary Jane. Nice, yes. She has taken care of her husband and her children. So she's not through. She can take care of him. Her children are just so busy. And he was watching her. Hope she's just going to be thankful she's not in there.
She's...
I know. So she...
Well, don't use public company.
Yeah, well, she's in preschool and so... And there's no problem in preschool.
Y'all would? Let me call this meeting over and before we get started, let me mention, I guess every one of you in here remembers what happened twenty-four years ago today. Tragedy by our country. We had a tragedy happen yesterday in that shooting. We had a lady that got killed in North Carolina just a few days ago. Let's remember all these people. And I'm gonna ask in behalf of each and every one, let's have a moment of silence. And then at that time after a moment of silence, I'm gonna ask Fred to lead us in a word prayer.
Lord, we thank you again for the privilege of serving our community on this council. We ask your special blessing on each and every home that's represented here. And especially today on the families of those who were so tragically lost twenty-four years ago, three days ago, and yesterday. We ask that you would give us clarity of mind and integrity of heart that all that we do will be honored to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
And y'all would like to say something like, "Praise..."
"Praise the religious to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. All right, item three on the agenda, discuss and vote to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, second, all in favor. unanimous. Okay, item four, discuss and vote to approve minutes.
Move to approve the minutes, it's stated.
Second.
Okay, got a motion, second, all in favor. unanimous. Item five on the agenda, discuss and vote on speeding on Willis Street.
Who would it be?
Oh, okay.
Oh, who would the one put this on?
Is Miss Hornsby here? Okay, she put it on the agenda. Deborah Hornsby. And, uh... She was concerned about speeding on Willis Street. Which, this is right out here. Uh, any discussion from the council?
People do seem to drive on the street a little bit speeding. But I don't live on it, so I don't really feel I should complain about it.
So, I'll... All we can do is just have police look out for you, you know?
Yeah, that's a presence.
Because do know there is, I've seen it before, because I drive a bus out here. But, uh, they run it and stop to find you at some, you know, so... We'll turn that over, but the police do their job. Item six, discuss a vote on you library board representative. Okay, take that job, right?
Yes, I'm Kristy Casemiro. I am the branch manager of the library. And you all get one representative as a funding agent, and thank you so much for your increased funding this year. It, um, along with the other increase, increases in funding have allowed for you to have a full-time library manager again for the first time in years, so we are very appreciative of that. Um, we have Miss Kathy Jean Smith right here, who is an active library patron and volunteer. And we would like to appoint her to the library board as the Sycamore representative.
Okay.
Without objection, so moved.
Okay, you making that into a motion?
Without objection, so moved.
Okay. And you got a second? We got a motion, second, all in favor. A valid five. Unanimous.
Thank you. If I may, may I just give you a brief update on the library too?
Please go ahead.
Um, so this past year, our summer reading program had tripled the number of participants filling out reading logs as we had the year before. We had a total of seven hundred people enter the building for programs between the months of June and July for forty programs. Um, we had over three thousand people enter the building over those two months. So people are using the library. Um, we have adult financial literacy classes. We have a fraud prevention seminar coming up. We have, uh, Samia is teaching a genealogy class. And then weekly, we have five programs for kids. We have a homeschool program. We have a teen program. And we actually have teenagers coming to the library. Um, we recently had a teenager come up to check out a book. And the, uh, he didn't have a library card. He said, "Hold on, let me go get my dad." And so the dad was sitting in the parking lot, and he came in, he said, "Yeah, my son's on a date back there at the table. I'm here chaperoning it." So, I mean, we have all kinds of people coming into the library. We've got toddler time, and, um, it's wonderful. We would welcome you all to come anytime, and we thank you so much for your support.
You have one quick question.
Oh, yes.
Did you say you have the fraud protection seminar coming up?
We do. On Monday night, Kelly Wilson, uh, Kelly Fletcher Wilson.
Sunday, Monday?
Yes, five-thirty, I believe. Yeah, she's the vice president of Colony Bank. She's doing fraud protection.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We appreciate you guys.
Aw, thank you. Thank you, guys.
And we can help you in any way.
Aw, thank you.
Let us like, my door is always open. Okay? I think it's passed. All right, item seven, discuss a vote on debris.
Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Yeah, I brought that up last time. That's right. For one year, don't charge the people with the debris pickup to seven dollars a month. Don't charge them with that. That'd be a total of like eighty-four dollars a household. And then, uh, that's about twenty-five thousand a year. Something like that, 'cause we got a little over three hundred. We got three hundred households per city.
Yeah, we have three hundred water meters, but not all them in the city limits that pay the debris charge. They probably, off the top of my head, two hundred and forty.
Well, even if it was three hundred, it'd be about twenty-five thousand a year for the city to do the old debt. And, uh, that way it'll help on there. Taxes. That way it would help the person that actually pays for water bills. And then whenever we do the military, if we lower it, that will actually help the owner, homeowner, whether they own the home and then rent it to the people that use the debris and pick up. Then both of them will get benefit from it. And so that's, that's kind of a way to give back some of tax money and give them a break on their taxes. That comes to about eighty-four dollars a year per household.
Any other council discussion?
I personally like the idea, um, just not necessarily to try to set a precedence to do it every year, but because the water bills did go up a lot for a lot of people and quite suddenly, I think even just anything we can do to show that, like, it, a sense of goodwill towards the people who live in our community would be, I think, would go a long way. Um, and I think we could use a little bit of, um, goodwill. And I only say that because there was quite a few comments, you know, out on social media, um, that were negative. Uh, people saying that they didn't get enough notice when we raised the water rates, even though we all know that there's only so much we can do by advertising and everybody, you know, I, I mean, it was all over the Wiregrass page and, I mean, there was... It was, it was in a lot of places, but nevertheless, people... You know, that, that idea that they didn't find out and we didn't tell them, um, optics do matter, I, I think, and so I think anything we can do and, you know, for for what we've got, I don't think that it's a cost that we can't absorb, afford to absorb for one year.
Well, there's more you have to look at than just the rate that you pay for them. Well, 'cause that's...
I understand.
The tipping fees. And you're gonna have to source the tipping fees too, am I not correct?
That's right.
Well, yeah, that, that ain't bigger than what the seven dollars? What's bigger than what the seven dollars?
That goes to tipping fees, which it don't cover the whole thing, but still, what I'm saying is...
We had gone for twenty-five thousand dollars a year for tipping fees?
I don't have a total on it right now.
I don't, I don't have a total. It's usually running, you know, it wouldn't be twenty-five thousand, but it usually runs somewhere around, correct if I'm wrong, Sean, about five thousand a month.
Probably.
Yeah, somewhere right there.
I don't know, but that'd be more than...
That five thousand dollars a month?
That'd be more than twenty-five dollars.
So then...
Oh, it's five hundred. Five hundred.
I'd have to pull the numbers back on it.
I'll hold on, man. I will. And I, I did.
Sixty-five hundred. Also be considered, not just the tipping fees, but the man hours required, the equipment required, uh... The overall cost is a great, a good bit more than the tipping fees alone.
I'm not arguing with the concept, though.
Okay, so with all of that you said, then how do we come up with a seven-dollar fee? Are we not, should we charge more? Because we got all these fees, tipping charges, all this other? Should we not figure that in when we said seven dollars?
At the time, the seven-dollar fee was, actually was raised a few years back from five to seven, uh, because the tipping fees had gone up.
Right.
And, uh, we're, we tried to less, lessen the impact on the city residents as much as possible, and we're not planning to, not considering raising the debris pickup now.
Okay. And what I'm saying is, we paying tax, we paying taxes twice this year. Once, and, and it, none of our fault.
I agree.
It's none of our fault. We paying taxes twice this year. We got down as close as we could on the military. Water went up. So I think that the city has enough money and savings that we could save. Let them have eighty-four dollars per household for one year. And then all the taxes and all get back straight and then go on from there. Get back on the program. Like you said, it's kind of like a goodwill thing.
What do you think's gonna help them more, though? Just have to the equation? Saving that eighty-four dollars on that water or dropping taxes another day?
Well, can we drop taxes another mill from what? It was, you know, we...
We're fixing to have to set it.
Yeah, we couldn't set it where we wanted it last time. We had to go up from where we wanted it last time. So I don't mind dropping the military. And that's for the, okay, that'd be the homeowner. But the renter don't get no benefit from that.
Is there a reason we can't do both?
Yeah, why can't we do both? We got enough money in the copper to do both.
Okay. I ain't got a problem. I'm, I'm just asking, I have to the equation.
I mean, the thing about this, when are we gonna start? 'Cause we're gonna say, okay, well, the taxes due in December. So are we gonna start in January to January or when to when?
As council says.
Well.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion that way. Do away with the seven-dollar debris fee for one year, starting in, say, January.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor? All against? Okay, one against. Fred, voting against. Rest of you is passed. Item eight, discuss a vote on animal control. Okay, do discuss.
I'm in favor of controlling animals.
As Bob Barker says, spaying the herd are your pets. Remind us what the discussion is about?
The issues are unchanged since last month. When there's an animal cruelty case, the officers have to concentrate on the malefactor and can't concentrate on the animal.
And the council has to take the John Brown Police Lady. There, we not take surrender animals?
I concur with that, but again, you're gonna end up with them being surrendered on Coverdale Road. And they would be walking back into town, and so then we gonna have them anyway. Unless they get hit by a car. Plated Street with Asher's children.
Is there any way we can locate this Asher and have animal control? Like...
They do, but...
The one in Asher is not staffed, the way I understand it.
Well, they have an animal control officer up there. I could talk with Asher and talk about an intergovernmental agreement and see what we can work up. Uh... So I can put that on the table and try to find out all this stuff we've got.
It seems to me that if we and Asher...
It seems to me like three municipalities in this county should be able to do something about, uh, about straying and surrender dogs and cats, that sort of thing.
My opinion, the county ought to have. Reason why? Well, we give you something for your taxes. You say, "Well, they already did." No, they don't. We got our own fire. We got our own, uh, police. The only thing that we don't have is animals. And they come out to your house and pick you up. Guess who they gonna send a bill to?
That house.
You heard of Bill? Yeah, and you're right.
We just got one.
Yeah. So, you know, what they give? They might maintain in our rights here. Am I correct, Tom?
Did I understand right that you're gonna try to talk to Asher about...
Yeah.
...in the government?
Intergovernmental agreement, and we'll see what we can work out. I'll do that twenty-nine next month. And, uh... So going to electricity, which I'm trying to quit them, 'cause we...
Is there anything we need to solution for in the meantime? Have a sort of temporary resolution for, or is it just gonna be business as usual?
Uh... We have been using a place over in Worth County. And I guess we have the possibility of taking something else over there if needed.
I was getting to understand they were filled out.
Well, that may be so. Sean can tell you more about that.
We have to call on a case-to-case basis and say, "Hey, can you take this dog?" Every time we come across one. And that was the original problem we was running into why we stopped taking surrendered dogs. Just because of limited space and everything else, so...
Is there a, um, common surrendered dog that we see most of? Like, is it just mutts?
Yeah.
People will come down like Maddie or closest city limits or close to city limits down yonder, right on the other side of the jail. Over there off of Railroad. And they'll put dogs out at night. I know I've seen it many a times. And, uh, or they'll put out cats or whatever. And believe me, you know, I mean, we run over with animals down here. Not, not run over an animal.
Or run.
We're overrunning with animals down here.
And isn't...
Let me reword that, and then don't get the Wiregrass wrong. I ain't saying the...
We run over animals down here.
All right, let's move to item nine. Discuss a vote on retirement. I was just advocating last month. It's gonna be up the council, council's decision. Uh, if y'all wanted to up the contribution, right now we pay nineteen dollars, up to nineteen dollars a max on the retirement, employees' retirement. Do you want to up that to a cap of twenty-five dollars?
I move that the, uh, matching portion from the city for retirement be increased to twenty-five dollars per permanent employee.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor? Okay, you know? All right, item ten, discuss a vote on removing tree on Collin Street. Before we hear it, Sean?
Okay, I got, uh, I called three more tree cutters. I got one more to come in to give me a bid. His bid, uh, total was thirty-five hundred. And the total loan, the first one we had was thirty-eight hundred. There's a little bit difference in the, one of them costs more for the stump drying and the other one costs less for the stump drying.
Quick question, are both bidders licensed and insured?
Yes, bonded.
Are they, are bonded?
What he, he told me was, and he said he could provide, uh, proof of insurance and everything if he wanted to be.
Are both bidders qualified as far as accomplishing the work?
Far as I know, I, I've worked with one of them, I haven't worked with the other one. I, I can't comment on that, but I, I haven't got nothing, I don't see anything would be against him, so.
Who are the two that did it?
I got a bid from Russell's Tree Service and Elite Tree Solutions.
And does that include them hauling off the tree? Or is that us keeping the tree and hauling it off?
That's them hauling off the tree.
Okay.
On both bids.
They gonna have to do this tree piece by piece because there is a power line that's long here in LA.
Right.
The second guy, Elite Tree Solutions, he said he would bring in a crane. And like pick up, cut the top out and pick it up and set it up.
And he's cheaper than the first one?
Yes.
What's the price of the two numbers again?
All right, uh, I'll give you the breakdown. Twenty-eight hundred on the complete removal of the tree. And the other one was thirty-five hundred dollars. Now, the difference in the price is this, uh, Elite Tree wants seven hundred dollars to grind the stump. And Russell's Tree Service wants three hundred to grind the stump. So.
As public works director, what's your personal recommendation?
Um, I've worked with Russ, I mean, I, I, I know his work is the only thing I can go by. Uh, he is a little bit higher. And the other guy, I just can't comment on his. Cause I haven't worked with him. If y'all would like to give him a try, we'll do that, or?
They gotta start somewhere, you know?
What bothers me isn't not trusting you, but we've got a home potentially at risk.
Is he bringing, is he bringing in a crane instead of just?
I'm gonna let y'all look this, I'm gonna leave, pass this.
It's gonna act as being, with something's gonna have to be ground. It would actually be in total, Russell's bid would be thirty-eight hundred altogether. And the other one would be thirty-four hundred altogether.
About four hundred difference.
He's charging three hundred dollars more to grind the stump, so adding those two together.
This is the bid y'all want to look at.
Whoever got the crane, this one, I would suggest go that way it will. If that thing got to a crane, it's gonna go straight up.
It's got a complete wafer.
Right.
By signing this.
I ain't, I ain't applicating this house, I just, I moved it and I didn't open it, right.
Yeah, most of these have waiver clauses in it. Uh, where the city would have to hold the contractor harmless for any damage. Including but not limited to unmarked underground utilities, landscape areas, driveways, sidewalks, or other paved or hard scraped areas from the use of equipment.
Then why is he insured?
Tell me what's it?
We're both over here grinding the stump?
Yeah.
Stump? Okay, so I wanted to make sure I understood that.
What are you gonna do if he tears the asphalt up? What's he gonna do if he drops a tree through somebody's house?
Either one of them knows, if they both have a waiver clause, it's.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is. That's why I said I would trust the guy with the crane coming in as opposed to just cutting. The crane will give you some security of it not falling on the house or the carboard is right there.
And I understand that, but my point is, they're, they're, they're putting a waiver clause in this and they're bonded. But I, that, that seems, those two things seem mutually exclusive to me. You get a bond in case there's an accident.
That's true.
And now he's saying that, uh, these are saying that, oh, we're held safe harmless. I, that, that, counselor?
Both of them.
Help do that.
Both of them have the same thing, right?
And I understand, but my point is that, you know, if, if, if they lose hydraulic pressure and that crane drops that tree on somebody's car or on somebody.
I understand that.
The city's gonna hold them harmless? Am I missing something, Sean?
That's, uh, a clause they always had in there, I don't know, uh. The, uh, Elite Tree's got a little more detail than the description of it.
Okay.
That's three hundred dollar difference.
Yeah, yeah, and then that one over there, it got the crane on it and this one don't. I, I, I'd feel better with the crane in that situation.
Well, this, this.
Because of where it's at.
Do you wanna put that in motion, council?
Yeah, I'll make a motion and go with, uh, Elite Tree Solutions.
Okay.
For thirty-five hundred dollars, each one not bringing the crane, correct?
Elite Tree Solutions, someone said they're bringing the crane.
Motion is on the floor, do I have a second?
Second?
I can hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we use Elite Tree Service.
Is that the owner?
That's the board.
And the one with the.
And the one with the crane.
I second the motion.
Well, she already had.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion, a second on the floor, all in favor? You done?
You ready?
He is there.
I'll call him and get him in here.
Okay, I'm eleven, Fred will be taken out.
All right, this is put an additional, uh, street light on, uh, North Railroad at a particular place. I've been by and looked, uh, twice just to make sure I wasn't missing it. And yes, it is shaded, but it is not dark, black dark. Uh, and so it's not necessary. And second, and this is the biggest thing to me, if we begin putting extra street lights at city expense, everywhere is a little dark, we're gonna go flat broke in no time flat. Everybody will want one. Unfortunately, that's not a good, a good precedent to set. So, I'm going to, uh, suggest that we vote no. I want to hear a discussion before making a motion.
If that's the case, why do we even have to vote?
We have to vote, well, we don't have to vote, but, uh, it would be wise to be on record as voting one way or the other.
Well, my, my point is, we're, we're voting to not do something.
That's, that is correct, to avoid setting a very dangerous and expensive precedent.
Oh, I, I do not disagree with you at all. I think it's a matter of, um, having not necessarily a policy in place, but to have an idea of, um, average distances between streetlights. Um, I'm curious that, cause I know down Matty, uh, not Matty, College where I'm at, going on down towards the range. Some lights were put up down there, were those at the city's expense or do you know?
We hadn't put anything up.
So, all of those are at the, at the, um, expense of the owner of the property?
Yeah, whatever was existing on the road was already there, but we haven't put anything.
Well, I knew there were some lights that had gone up in the last few years, I just wasn't sure if those were city lights or if they were.
We hadn't.
Okay.
Right now.
Which you'll find in other parts of town too.
Sure.
Right behind Russ or me and right behind, I believe right behind you, James.
So, I didn't know if there was a particular, that there should be a street light every so often in the city? If that was a, if there was a guy on that we have, anything like that?
Where there's one at the corner of Railroad and Collins. And then there's another one down past my house, and there's one back behind my house in the alley.
Yeah, I don't know the difference between who, uh, uh, a street light that we put up and a street light that Georgia, that, that the homeowner's paying for.
Yeah, those are all.
As I understand it, uh, at least, and I don't have documentation, but I have been told that, uh, Georgia Power surveyed and determined the locations of the lights that the city has paid for. So, I'm gonna go ahead and move that we not add streetlights at this time.
I'll take a bet.
You don't make a motion?
Yep, there's a motion.
Cause he's handling his.
That's right, I'm, I'm cheering. Somebody else needs to make the motion, correct and I'm corrected.
Make a motion, Alan?
Well, I'll make a motion that we don't put out any more streetlights.
Second. At the time being.
For the time being. Second.
Uh, motion and second, all in favor? Or both, no, unanimous. Mr. Mayor, it's back to you.
All right. Item twelve, uh, discussing but on beer and wine business license application for Suttonmoor, Texas, LLC, which will be across the street over here at Old Nick's building, so you have the floor?
Yes, sir, to address you and the council on eight twenty twenty-five, I received an alcohol beverage license application from Mr. Si. I directed a background investigation of the applicant noted above, Mr. Si.
Singing.
Singing. Provided a valid address for the purpose of application, subsequent background investigation, a background check revealed no criminal record would prevent Mr. Sing from opening or operating a business with malt beverage or and wine license. It is my opinion based upon this investigation that he meets the requirements after Mr. Sing has passed fire inspection. I recommend at this time the council vote to approve the license.
Okay, I, council on but on this?
Based on established precedent, I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Stand for it.
All against? We have one against, y'all made who that is? Uh, which, okay. Okay, so pass. Item thirteen, you got anything you need to bring forward to the police department? Just join us, that's, okay. Move to you.
All right. Yeah.
You got a stack of papers?
I do, uh, we had a, uh, incident with our bucket truck. We load a hose down in the extend tube part, and I've got two quotes on it. And one is, and these are rough quotes. They cannot be locked down, cause I haven't sent it to them for them to actually tear it apart. This is just preliminary rough quote. Uh, one from the hydraulic shop in Tifton, uh, was ten thousand dollars. And I got one from, uh, and it was a rubber, but from, uh, Skyline out of Albany for eleven thousand.
Oh. And that's to do what? To make the bucket go up and down?
Yes, make the bucket go up and down.
Let it stand now.
And, yeah, make all the functions.
Make all of it work.
What happened, did, did you?
I was a hydraulic line? Yeah, I blow the hydraulic line, I was back here working on the side of the building. And it popped, left me about twelve foot in the air, I had to get a ladder and climb down.
Did you really?
How much would a big extended ladder cost?
An extended ladder? I don't know, I wish, I've missed a hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
That's really exciting, would it not be?
It would be.
Uh, have a little slouch?
Yeah.
Sean, what's the, um, like, have we had this problem happen before?
Yes, we have, uh.
On this particular truck?
This particular truck, this particular line.
Okay.
And, uh.
When's the last time that happened?
About four years ago.
Okay.
It was, I think it was in, might have been five years ago, it was during COVID. Uh. It's.
Is that, is that, does that feel like a cost that's gonna be staying in the ten to eleven thousand dollar range? Or do you feel like?
The last cost was around.
Fifteen.
Four thousand, it could, now this cost could upwards, couple, couple thousand dollars more than what I told you. Uh, we won't know until they get the truck and actually get into it and see exactly what all has to be done. They'll probably have to take the boom off to get the lines straightened and replaced.
Yeah, that's a problem. You gotta disassemble, disassemble.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of work just to, it ain't like an outside line on a backhoe or something, we can just go in and replace ourselves.
You couldn't put a patch in a bicycle bomb?
Nah, nah. But, uh, I mean, it's the. We need the truck to do our Christmas decorations and what tree trimming we're able to do with it. Uh, if y'all wanna think about it and see about, I mean, the option of another truck or what would y'all rather do?
How mu, in your opinion, how much more service life do you have in that truck?
We've had some trouble with it for this past year with, uh, some fuel lines and fuel issues. We worked on it ourselves and so far we think we've got that straightened out. It still has the issue with the cluster, instrument cluster. Uh, it's a two thousand model, it's twenty-five years old. Well, original price of the truck was, I think seventeen-five. Used.
How much would a new one cost? A new old one?
A new old one in decent shape, uh, start at thirty, then you'd really have to look at it, you gotta look at, are you gonna have trouble with the transmission, are you gonna have trouble with the motor? Or hoses again in an old truck?
What's that one cost? Eighty-five thousand dollars?
A new one.
At least.
At least, uh, that. Used ones are running, uh, a, a good used one is in the fifty, fifty thousand dollar range.
It's kinda like the grapple truck. And some of y'all wasn't on the council at the time. The council approved me by a grapple truck. Well, the next morning, me and Sean were sitting in my office. We called this company of this truck, we looking at it. Beautiful picture of that truck. And I told him, I said, listen, I got approval last night for sixty-five thousand dollars to buy this truck. And we wanna get, yeah, okay, we'll get it in and get it fixed. I said, wait a minute, what are you talking about, get it fixed? And well, they some things need repairing on it, and I said, can you send me a list of it? It looked worse than rap sheet. I mean, it was unreal, and I called back, I said, nevermind, we don't want it. Yeah, so we went another route. Uh.
When did we get this truck? You said it's a two thousand model?
Uh, it's a two thousand model.
But we didn't buy it new.
No, we did not buy it new.
Yeah.
I remember getting it.
Well-used, uh. I have to base it on time, like, uh.
We were dealing with city hall.
Say that time. Uh, but it's, it's been some years back.
We can have him, if y'all want to hold this issue, we can have him look online at some used ones. Oh, that might be good shape as to how much they would run versus the cost of fixing this one. And then decide next month, but, you know, I, I don't know, you tell me what's the best one to get.
Yeah, I, I agree, I mean, they, uh, if we run into something, we'll just have to, uh. And it makes something we gotta do right now, if we push them to show if we could rent one to do our Christmas decorations or rent a lift. And that, that's another option, we could have, look at, uh, a lift that would do the same job.
You got a point, you need to look at that.
Got a question.
Go ahead.
How much you think we'd sell that truck for?
Not functioning like it is? Not functioning like it is.
Suppose we put money in your area, how much you think we'd sell for?
Fifteen? This ain't one. And that'd be, uh, risk.
Yeah. My point is, if we sell it, help Fred across the fine, or do it. Or. Well, the thing is, it's rolling stock, so we pay for its loss.
Yeah.
Here's another point, we could also look into what we did with the gravel truck, and consider a lease purchase.
Yep.
And did a cost analysis on the gravel truck, and I'm sure John remembers, it was going to cost the city twenty-five thousand, that's a round numbers, twenty-five grand per year for five years. But according to the way I figured, not counting possible workers' comp claims, didn't take that into account. Not counting that, it was going to save the city thirty thousand a year. So for the first five years, we were earning five grand a year.
Well.
Then we paid a dollar, it was ours, it's all our savings.
Well, if the vehicle is twenty-five years old, uh, I submit that repairing it is getting us into the law of diminishing returns, whereas getting a new one, pay for its loss, that's not coming out of our tax coffers. So I would really consider, I, I, I think it is financially prudent to think about replacing it.
I, I would agree.
Lease purchases an option.
Absolutely, and again, we pay for its loss.
Yeah.
Well, can we look at some of those options for next month?
Yeah, would, would you, used and new?
Yes.
Which one do we wanna?
Yes.
If it's used, then somebody's getting rid of it.
A good used one or?
Yes.
Or?
The possibility of a lease purchase, or?
Right.
Like we done with.
How, how often do y'all use that?
Uh.
With a new one.
We don't use it that often, but when we need to trim limbs around town, it comes in super handy, if we need to do, uh, building maintenance, it's super, uh, handy to have.
How much does a lease, how, how much does the cost go down after you took the lease from one?
You're my red one.
You're talking about short-term rentals?
Yeah.
You're asking, you're asking for trouble, been there before. They're not always as good as you think they're gonna be. It's sort of like the one that.
He's talking about leasing one for one day when you needed it, what he does.
Yeah.
Just rent it, rent it for that one day.
I mean, if he don't use it, but if, if you use that truck twenty times a year.
Okay, I mean, if we got a land down or something happens, we're gonna have to wait and rent it and then come back and fix it.
And if we have a hurricane, you ain't gonna li- you ain't gonna rent it, cause it ain't gonna be available.
Right.
That's a good, a good point.
And we all know what a bullet we dodged last year with the lead.
I do.
Get, get us, get us a, get us a champagne option and a Billard Genuin draft option.
All right, uh, I'll have some options for next month, councilman.
What would be the lowest of the options?
Billard Genuin drive.
Is that the cheapest beer out there?
No, I think cheap beer is slits.
Anything else?
Yeah, I got one more thing, this is, uh.
You better speak your holy feet.
Okay. This is, uh, back on the pump issue with the spray field, I got a bid to put it in, and they also gave me a bid on the pump itself. Uh, his bid come in cheaper than the pump that I got y'all to approve last time. So I was gonna run that by you and see what y'all thought. Then this would be, with him getting the pump, would be eighteen-five and the twenty-five hundred to put it in. Which it would go on the floor in the shop right now. And we wouldn't pay the twenty-five hundred, it'd be the eighteen-five right now. And when and if that pump ever fails, we'll have it ready to go in.
And are they gonna take it to that same price?
Well, it, that's according with everybody, quotes are good for thirty days. Twenty-five hundred dollars, if it's two years down the road, it's gonna change. You can't ask nobody to stay with the same price for unlimited amount of time. But the eighteen-five would be him ordering the pump and bringing it and setting it down, that price would be today's price, and getting it done. We would have our stock sitting on the floor. But just to pull it and put it, that's, that's gonna fluctuate. Uh, and I can't say what prices will be next year, two years down the road. I'm sure it wouldn't be that much more. Couple hundred dollars, five hundred dollars more maybe.
All right, counsel, you got it clear.
And the original one we was looking at, that y'all approved for me to get, but he come up with, uh, a quote on for me. The first one was nineteen-four forty-eight. And this guy come in at eighteen-five.
Same, huh?
Same home.
Go with eighteen-five.
I think so.
Okay.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion, you go with the government, do it with eighteen-five.
Second.
They all in favor? Done.
And that was all I had.
Thank God.
Uh, yeah.
All right, let's go to item fourteen, public input. Justin, I know that you was here, you got something you wanna speak on. Okay.
I brought me some visuals.
Oh, I thought you had a good jam there.
We've got a rental house on Matty.
Yeah.
And we are having troubles with this polybutylene splitting. If you look at it.
You ain't gotta tell me no more, I can tell you about that thirty years ago.
That's the manufacturer. But what I'm here asking for is some relief on Miss Winn Cruz's life here. Every one, thirteen dollars twenty cents.
We don't have no life.
Twenty-six.
Woodbill.
Here's another forty-one. Here's one for twenty-five. Here's one for thirty-eight. Here's what you got this month that we prepared this line three times.
You still use polybutylene?
We're doing the real stuff.
Schedule, what's that, schedule forty-two?
Yes, schedule forty.
Schedule forty.
But this is getting, this is just getting expensive, I mean, these right here is twenty bucks.
You, you, you pre- required, I know, because I had to have a polybutylene line there in my yard years and years, years ago. Uh, polybutylene was the biggest boom dog in plumbing there ever was.
I agree a hundred percent.
And before we go on, are there any, if there are any, polybutylene on the inside the house?
No.
Okay. So the repair's been done?
The repairs are done just as soon as we found that one, but I mean, it's, we've done three in the last four weeks. One more time, and I'm, I'm gonna disconnect that meter and run my line the whole way.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you again. You will never be quick of that problem until you get rid of that polybutylene.
Well, I'm just trying to get her some relief, you know, when you go from twenty-five, thirty-five dollar woodbill up to two hundred and something.
I know.
You know, single woman, she's working from daylight to dark, trying to make it.
Are, are we charging her irrigation fee, or we charging her water, regular water sewer fee?
Well, things water and sewer, but water's not.
We don't have a sewer.
It's not sewer.
Yeah, we charging her irrigation fee for the water, or we charging her the water for the, like.
Adderis eight sixty nine.
It's outside Sid Lemon's, and it's just a standard, uh, water bill for water only, just like everybody else. It's outside Sid Lemon. And the amount of water she used was, does, is that a copy of the bill there on that one?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the last couple of months, one of the bills, and then this vice versa. This was the last couple of months, and then this is the vice versa.
Two of the leaks were found by the guy that she gives to more grass, and he pulled up the ditch for water.
It was, it was pond out there, and the usage on this is three hundred and forty thousand.
Great dancing.
Yeah, and her average usage is like thirteen hundred.
One thousand. But, as a reference, that's three of those water tanks sitting out there. So I'm at three point four.
Yeah.
So how long did it have to leak before it used three hundred and forty thousand, huh?
Nobody's always gonna leak everything.
Well, that, that leak would leak twenty-four hours, but that.
It wasn't leaking when she left to go to work, and we, we found it during the day. I mean, it's old, her old front yard was a pond.
I, I, yeah, I seen it. The whole ditch was up there, pretty clean water, it was, it was flooded. And when they called me up there, I just went ahead and shut the meter off, and I should have called them.
We fixed it that day.
Yeah, I know.
And then at the same time, we fixed it, y'all, and the police on y'all's side to me.
No, we didn't have a leak, they checked it for. Yeah, they, they dug, there was so much water out there, they dug around and investigated, make sure we didn't have, that it wasn't a leak on our. Three hundred and forty, that, that's three water tanks worth of water leaked through the house. Or through the yard, not the house.
That's the only thing I can think of.
Um, but it could have been leaking a while before it popped up to the surface.
That's a possibility, cause when we found it, it was boiling up out of the ground. And every one of these leaks were pouring it down. So much, I don't know how long it's been going down before.
They, they started, they started as pinhole leaks, because the polybutylene breaks down with the chlorine in the water. That, that's what they didn't know when they manufactured it. Mr. Mayor, we have established precedent on this matter.
Okay.
Which is?
Uh, we, the water does not go through the sewer, so we do not assess, uh, assess the, uh, sewer fee.
There isn't any.
That's right.
Suggestion. Uh, we, we can't, we can't change what goes into a meter, that we control what goes in. What comes out of the meter, we have no control over that. However, I would suggest a no penalty payment plan, where you don't have to come up with it all at one time, that would pay it right. Uh, I think work that out with, uh, Ashley and Bethany. And instead of paying it all at once, pay it with no penalty over the next several months. Twelve months?
Twelve months.
Go for twelve months.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, go for twelve months with no penalties.
Whatever y'all can do, you know, I mean.
I, I wish there was something we could do, but once it goes through the meter, the city no longer has any control or, or authorization.
If her, usually what she'll do is she'll set up a payment on twelve months, and.
With no penalty.
Yeah, with no penalty. And what that usually entails is, say her regular water bill's running twenty dollars a month, then she can pay an extra twenty dollars a month, and then that other bigs all up eventually.
But then in year, it's no big.
Yeah, divide the, that bill by twelve and put it on payment plans.
Yeah.
Pay your regular bill, and then whatever that divides out to be it.
It comes up by fourteen, fifteen dollars.
Fifteen dollars extra a month for a year.
Well, that's all I'm asking, just for some kind of relief for her.
Yeah.
Some move.
Oh. Second, what, what's her name?
Winn Cruz.
Winn Cruz?
Win.
G W Y N, I presume it's one N.
G W N?
G W M?
G W E.
G W E, okay.
Reason I want to get that down is I'll tell Bethany that she's gonna be coming in to see him, and the council has said to do this for her to help her out.
All right.
And that way she'll already know about what's gonna, Bethany having to pay.
You need a motion on that?
It's already been moved, they moved in second.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear the second.
Okay, all in favor of that? Lovely. Thank you. All right, anything else?
We pay bills?
All right, second. Anybody got a second? Okay, all in favor?
We'll go home.
Second.
All in favor?
We are here, gentlemen.